Welcome to the March 15 Library Board of Trustees Meeting. And my name is Jim Hanley. I'm the board president. And as we do, we typically will go around the room alphabetically and have everyone introduce themselves. Typically, we start off with Michael Dunn, who will be joining us later, so we can just continue on. I think Carolyn, you next.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Guy, Vice President of the Board.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Hallenstein. I'm treasurer.
Morning. I'm Teresa Settler, Board Member.
Maybe I'm off.
I'm Walter, Board Member.
Janice Welfer, Board Member.
Okay, based on those who responded, we have it for them this morning. And I couldn't get ahead of my clock, so you're gonna hear in the background. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February meeting minutes. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, and changes? Okay, again, we'll use a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the EALs. So again, I'll make the motion to approve the EALs. I have a few questions, but let's get a second.
Any second.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Any questions on the EALs? Yeah, I just have two. And again, I mentioned I tried to ask about ones that are larger, which is somewhat subjective, but and they may be repeated, but I just don't recall. So but what is Sukter International, which was about 3,700? Is anybody gonna answer?
What's the date on that, Jim?
I'm sorry?
The date?
Yeah, I don't have the EALs in front of me.
It's March 4. S- Sukter, S-U-C-H-T-E-R.
Yeah. All right, I guess if someone can get back to us on... The other one I wasn't familiar with was the large Landon and... I'm sorry, no, it's I take it back, Zones, which was about almost 6,000. Yeah, I don't get all the date on that.
That's also March 4.
Okay.
Jim, this is Belinda. The Zones is some IT contracts that we have.
Okay.
And the Sukter, I'm trying to remember, and I'm looking that up to see what it was.
All right, well, let's not delay. If you can just get back to us. Again, certainly, they're they're very expensive. Just that, again, it's part of our due diligence and the role of the board, we should at least ask about any expenses we normally don't recognize.
I think that the Sukter one is also an IT expense.
Yeah, it is. I just found it. It is another IT subscription that we have.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Okay, all again, all in favor of accepting the EALs? Please indicate by saying aye. Say aye. Okay, motion carries. It's Sandy, you're up.
Okay, I have the March 12 Treasurer's Report for you. Our PNC checking account had an opening balance on February 3 of $710. There were no deposits or withdrawals, and the current balance is as of 3/12 was $710. On our Vanguard investment accounts, the original account's value on February 3 was $76,240.79. There were no deposits or withdrawals. The share price at that time was $10.74. We owned 7,098.770 shares for a yield of 1.11%. On March 12, the account value was $75,739.71. The share price was $10.66. We own 7,105.038 shares. A dividend of $67 was paid on February 26, and the yield was 0.81%, and that was a change in share price of minus 8 cents. So on that account, dividends paid to date in 2021 total $103.29. On the Rudolph account, the account value on February 3 was $18,902.21. No deposit or withdrawals. The share price again was $10.74. We owned 1,759.982 shares for a yield of 1.01%. On March 12, the account value was $18,776.52. Share price was down 8 cents to $10.66. Shares owned 1,761.400. A dividend of $15.16 was paid on February 26, bringing dividends to date on that account to $22.56. The yield was 0.71%.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the Treasurer's Report. Can I get a second?
No second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Go ahead, John.
Question or two. Are these funds in the library's foundation?
No, they are not. The foundation is a separate nonprofit entity.
And my second question is, do we need this much liquid performing so anemically?
Sandy, that one, that one you get to answer, but there's a there's a requirement that we have a certain amount in the corpus.
Yes, we have to have $55,000 in the original account value. That is a requirement on the account.
Sorry, did you say 6.5 or 5.5?
Five, 5.5.
55, all right.
Just as a note, I did, I shared my login access with John because the accounts have not been performing as well as they have in the past. And unfortunately, our Vanguard has required a security code, a texted security code to log in. So basically, sharing that with him locked me out. We had to talk. I had to get my my number back in. But I would like to add John on with full access. If no one has any objection, get him his own login because I think with his background, he could provide us some insight and wisdom that I don't have. That's all right.
Yeah, I think that is a good idea for a couple of reasons. One, you know, we tend to keep these funds in a relatively conservative... Not relatively, but very conservative, which is a trend we typically have in other investments primarily for retirement. But is that necessary? In other words, can we diversify those funds in any way? So yeah, I think it's a good idea to have John take a look at it. And right, if it's the only way he can do it, then that's great. That's fine.
All right.
And I would like, go ahead.
I'm gonna investigate that. I think I can initiate that process online, but I'll contact you offline if I need any additional information to make that happen.
Okay, and I want to be clear. If access is granted, I want everybody to understand, even if the access in their minds allows me to quote "operate" the account, that's not gonna happen. So I don't want any operational abilities. I just wanna look at it. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, John, I certainly speak for the board. We have every confidence in your handling of that, so we're not we're not in any way concerned.
Right.
It brings me to...
I was just gonna say there were different levels of access. I was afraid if I did not give you the full access, that it might not give you access to everything you need to look at.
Okay. So a follow-up question, if I may then. If if these are not foundation funds, what is the foundation doing financially on behalf of the library?
Michael Dunn, who is the basically the president of the foundation now. Do you wanna handle that, or shall I?
Sure. I mean, the foundation is really charged with fundraising activities, capital campaigns, events, things like that. I don't recall Michael Blackwell sort of how the money is stored or like which accounts, but the foundation is definitely more focused on the fundraising piece.
Do they have assets?
Yes.
Currently, there's about $35,000 in a checking account. And we do have a treasurer who is an accountant who serves that function. And basically, when an expense comes up that we would like to ask the foundation to pay for, we make a request of the foundation. Most recently, for example, they paid for the plaque Honored Mary Lee Russell in the renaming of what used to be called the Maryland Room, and also a large donor plaque. An update to that to reflect some new $500 or $1,000 donors. They have paid for quite a bit of things related to the new library, including that boat that is there in the children's area. So basically, as I say, they the the foundation works to and the Friends as well have their book sales and other fundraising work to support the library separately as separate 501(c)(3) organization.
Well, what I'm hearing is we don't seem to have any money that we regard as long-term endowment money.
If if you mean people donating to the library long-term or out of their wills, is that what you're referring to?
It's not so much where it comes from as it is what are we doing with it. So it might be a bequest, it might be a current endowment gift, et cetera. But we have a propensity here for super-low risk, ultra-high liquidity, very low return on monies that I think could be working harder. That's my point.
Yeah, John, that's what I just mentioned. I think it's worthwhile having you look at it because you're right. We we tend to gravitate toward the low-risk type of investments, which, again, in different arenas, I believe, right, Michael? Blackwell, that we are obligated for retirement funds and other areas to be more conservative, but there's no restrictions based on, for example, the funds we just went over. So yeah, I think it's worthwhile looking at that.
The the library has two basic accounts, but the Friends and the Foundation are both separate entities. And if one wished to, the Friends does not keep a lot of money on hand. They're very quick to make donations to the library, and that money basically sits in our unexpended fund balance. And that's one of the two accounts we have. That one is with PNC. The issue with that one is that we draw upon it. Money goes into that account when we get paid by the state or by the county. And so we draw upon that for all our expenses. We could, and I'm happy to have the board discuss setting aside certain amounts of that money to to earn more, but we do need that for everyday expenses, and the whole amount could not be put towards a any particular investment. The other large account that we have, it's currently a little over $1 million, is the OPEB Fund. That's the employees retired employees help benefit fund. And we'll be talking about that a little bit later in the meeting today, as a matter of fact. So that's the other, that's the largest fund that we have. But it it is invested. And we were supposed to have a meeting with David Saunders from Asset Strategies today to talk with you about how it's invested, and he wished to make some changes. Mr. Saunders was scheduled to get a COVID vaccination this morning, and and obviously, we're very happy that he's able to take advantage of that. So he'll be with us next month, but as I say, I want to talk to you about some changes that have recently happened at the county level there and get your take on that.
So you guys did not transition over to Marquette?
No, we did not. Our our account is separate from the counties and therefore was not connected to that transfer. And if we could just hold off talking about that for a couple of minutes, we'll talk about maybe possibly moving forward on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just just to...
Also, John, if your question relates to any thought about consolidating the various sources, like the foundation and, you know, the funds we have here and the Friends of the Library, we have discussed that in the past. Not so much the funds that Sandy manages, but the other two, and I could share with you at some point, but it takes too much time to really explain why we still keep the foundation and the Friends of the Library separately.
And I just wanna close the loop here as Treasurer that I've really been in a maintenance mode on these accounts because they have typically been performing well enough to fund what we have historically wanted to fund, which is summer children's performances with the original account. The Rudolph account, I would assume that we need to be a little more careful on because that was established as a memorial gift solely for the purpose of helping to fund the summer intern. It was in memory of a young woman who was killed in an automobile accident, and the family donated that money. So that that's the side that we have to be more careful on. It never funds the intern fully, but it whatever interest it earns or dividends it earns during the year, it gets put towards the intern expenses. So that's basically the caveat I was given. You know, the trustees, years and years and years ago, I guess, were receiving donations and receiving gifts, and they decided that this was the best way to manage them. And I'm assuming that's where the $55,000 corpus requirement came in, so that they'd never get below a certain amount to manage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've basically then asked the questions about the Treasurer's Fund. So I'm sorry, I'm forgetting that myself. We didn't take a vote on it. So if I can ask you then to indicate acceptance of the Treasurer's Report by my voice, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item is me. The Smurler Report. Now, the Smurler meeting we just had was really to serve two purposes. There was a corporate meeting. And just for clarification, there is two boards, in effect. The Corporate Board, which consists of all members of all three counties, of the boards of all three counties. So it's all of you plus your equivalents in the other two counties. And we primarily focused on accepting two board members who were who were eligible for a second term, and that was approved. The State Librarian gave a little highlight of what they're doing. And we also discussed the issue of a project that is being initiated to look at all the regionals to see what are the roles of the regional, what are the roles of the boards within the regionals. So while that's that's still ongoing, we may not have a result of that for a while, but that was the other item that we talked about. So after the corporate meeting, then we conducted the regular meeting, in other words, the meeting of just the Smurler Board itself. And I kept the agenda light because we the primary focus of the meeting, one, we elected the officers, which were unchanged from the prior year. Secondly, well, we did wanna talk about the budget. We went through the budget extensively and approved the budget, which, to be honest with you, doesn't change a lot from year to year. We do make some adjustments, but but the budget for Smurler was approved for the following fiscal year. And that's pretty much the highlights of the the meeting itself. The Ashley, who is the CEO of Smurler, will be meeting now to map out projects for the for this year, other things that we'd like to see get done within Smurler. And I'll be sharing those with you as we as we go through that and we start some of these projects. Any questions on Smurler? Okay, then if not, Michael, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of updates before I launch into it. That is, when we look at the budget review, there's a new document. We put it on Board Docs and in the Google Document Folder, where you also track things this morning. It's just got a couple of updates on it, and I'll be reviewing that with you, so no need to go find it here. I want to add an agenda item. We have an update on some federal funding that may become available to Maryland libraries, and that can go after reopening updates, so federal funding update there. I do want to make another addition to the agenda of a personnel manual, and that's also been added to Board Docs and to that Google Folder, but I'll review it with you. So the personnel manual update can go before going fine free. And so we'll start with employee recognitions, and the first two are for Laura Boonchessry and Sarah Stevenson, who put together, organized our Black Men in White Coats Program. And that required substantial negotiations with some partners, the UCAC, the NAACP, the St. Mary's County Public Schools, dismantling racism, Historic Sotterly, with several panelists. We had four. It was moderated by Kelsey Bush, Michael Dunn's colleague from St. Mary's College of Maryland. And so a substantial amount of, as I say, organization of the panel and pulling that program together. And that's an agenda item for later, but let's go ahead and cover it now. What a wonderful and inspiring program that was. Janice, you were there. If you wanna comment on your take on that, I'd appreciate it. But the panelists were all very informative, and I think people came away seeing what in many cases in our county, we don't necessarily often see, which is a panel all of African-American people who are authorities. And one of them said, if you if you see it, you can be it. This is clearly the example of seeing it and inspiring people to be it. Janice, anything you wanna say about it?
Yes, it was really an excellent presentation. And I guess it was very enlightening because many of the doctors, I mean, there weren't a lot of doctors. There were three on the panel, Dr. Neal and a doctor from the MedStar doctors, African-American men, and Dr. Joyce Neal. And it was very enlightening that they had never really been invited to speak about their careers in, you know, the schools or panels. So it sounded like this was a first, which was wonderful. So thank you, Library Board and the staff for putting so much time and effort into sharing this information. It is important. It does shine a light on the work that we need to do.
Thank you, Janice. And again, thanks to Laura and Sarah for their great work pulling that program together. Next, we have many people to recognize. Amy Ford, Becky White, Alisa Mattingly, Kimberly Fields, Catherine D. Cristofaro, Fay Palmer, Katie Kalenda, Gina Berry, and Angela Angelidoo. And they have been manning or personing the phones. People are calling in to find out about getting vaccinations, getting the COVID vaccination. And we are assisting them with information and also getting them signed up to get the vaccination. And we're averaging on the days that we're doing that over 100 calls, and a couple dozen people were getting registered. So for all of you terrific teamwork answering vaccination registration calls, your outstanding customer service and commitment to giving accurate information has been very appreciated by citizens and by our community partners at the Health Department and Department of Aging. Thanks for bridging the digital divide and equalizing access to this lifesaving vaccine. And often, these are people who do not necessarily have computer access at home, and computer is the way to sign up for these. So thanks to all of you for doing great work, getting people involved with getting vaccination and spreading accurate information about COVID. Finally, we've got three others, and that's Robert Palmer, Tim Beers, and Jeff Powers. They were involved in some major projects installing the VoIP over Internet Protocol or VoIP phones at Lexington Park. They coordinated that effort with the county, programmed the phones, did troubleshooting, recorded messages, and implemented training for staff on all that. So thanks for your hard work in getting a better phone experience for all our customers. So lots of lots of great work going on at your library this past month, and thank you all. And I will have your certificate signed and distributed out to you. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move forward to the budget review. Yes?
Michael, Robert Palmer, you forgot John Guadalajara on the VoIP.
Oh, sorry, there is, sorry, I ran these off by mistake on double pages. John Guadalajara also recognized for that. Thank you very much, John, for your efforts as well. And I also will have a certificate of it for him, as I say, accidentally ran them off double-sided, so I've gotta go back and redo them. Let's go ahead and take a look at our budget review. One number will have changed. 69% of the year has elapsed. And as we look at that, we see that there's a couple of salary figures that are slightly above. Again, those are due to long-term and fairly high-paid employees being paid out upon retiring. And we've, you know, we're just having another with Ann Alvey retiring. So, you know, three employees who between them had 145 years of service. When they go and they get paid out, we are, we do, you know, owe them their their personal time. We, however, are looking fairly good overall in that category with 67% spent down. The telephone services are going to be a bit more expensive, and we're gonna have to adjust for our budget for next year for that. Part of that's just the transfer over to a new system. It is a lot more efficient. Slightly ahead of schedule is the Leonard Town Electric, and we're going to have to, we've asked the county to make an adjustment for that in the upcoming fiscal year. We'll see how we do with that. Looks like Lexington's water and sewer expenses are also ahead, so again, we need to be looking at that. The heating is very much ahead, and it's not been a particularly cold year. So we've asked the county to make an adjustment for us there. Fortunately, the amounts aren't really particularly high in terms of our overall expenses. Everything else is looking pretty darn good. I draw your attention to one figure on page 3, under charges and fees. And that's the figure for fines, which also includes law... the figure for fines, which also includes lost and damaged items. And you'll see, we had budgeted for $50,000 this year, and so far this year, we've got about $11,000, well, we've got exactly $11,566 collected there. So very much, and in some ways not surprising, but we're going to be talking about fines later on today, so I want to draw your attention to that figure as to what we have taken in this year. Any questions or concerns about the budget as presented?
Michael, can I ask, right above the fines, what is that services income? What does that refer to?
That's going to be photocopying, fees for faxes. It formerly included meeting room rentals, but we no longer rent out the meeting room. So it's basically small charges that we do for things. And it's going to be weighed down because we've not been open all that much in many instances for some of these services, and people have also been being more conservative about coming into the library. But more details about opening later. All right, well, let's move on to some FOLN Foundation updates. The Friends of the Library are not going to be able to have their annual book sale this year. It would have been at the end of this month. Obviously, COVID restrictions are still not yet that will allow that large a greeting when their spaces where they are selling are inside. They are doing very well with some online book sales, and they've ramped those up. They're still taking donations, and they've had to get a separate rental space because they've got so much on hand, but they are planning for a fall event. And then next year, obviously, we're all hoping we can have that big annual book sale The foundation is thinking about a fall event. We do not have firm plans on that yet, but again, we're hoping that the pandemic will be eased enough that we can have in-person events at the new library, possibly an author visit, or some other event that might involve refreshments as well. And we'll just have to see how that goes. But any event that we have this fall is going to have to have a virtual element as well. So stay tuned for more details on that. In May, we plan to start thinking about how that will look. We've already done the Black Men in White Coats recap. Again, a very, I'd call a successful program. We had nice online attendance. So we'll move into the legislative session update. The override of the governor's Veto of the Lifelong Learning Act, and we'll be discussing a ramification of that later, so I'll put off that. Kind of the other one that's really affecting St. Mary's County will be the ebook bill. It has now passed both the full House and Senate unanimously. There was not a single nay vote, which, in a time of some division in the country and in the state, seems quite remarkable to me. So it now has to have a reconciliation so that the same language in both is moved forward. The one amendment to it was to add digital audiobooks to it, and it will then go to the governor for signature. I've shared with you several articles that mention that legislation, one from the Washington Post, one from Publishers Weekly. I'm told by a colleague in Rhode Island that they had introduced similar legislation last year. It did not ever get considered because the legislation was closed to the pandemic, but they have reintroduced that or are reintroducing that with sponsors, so expect Rhode Island to do similar legislation. It's drawing quite a bit of attention in libraries. So once the governor signs it, and I'm assuming he's going to, although I'm not counting any chickens just yet, we intend to have a celebration in which we thank the governor and our legislators for their pioneering work in legislation like this. We don't yet have any sense, obviously, since it hasn't passed, about what the reactions in the publishing world are going to be. We are told by Mr. Fowler, who wrote the Washington Post article, that he asked Amazon about it, and they're not commenting. So there could be five possible outcomes. Obviously, the best would be compliance. The publishers just say, hey, okay, good, that's what we're going to do. Very unlikely would be that the publishers will stop selling ebooks to consumers in Maryland and Rhode Island. Rather doubt that's going to happen, but it's a possibility. Another possible outcome will simply be a delay, that they'll say, this is a big change, and we need time to work with libraries to have this happen, and simply never come to the table. They could simply ignore the legislation and say, in effect, all right, we're not going to do it, you'll have to sue us. Or they could seek a legal injunction to have the law not enforced until such time as legalities could be sorted out. But as I say, this is drawing quite a bit of attention in the library community, so we'll just have to see what comes of this particular legislation. So any questions about that one?
Michael?
Yes?
Michael?
Yes.
For the public's information, if it's in a nutshell, can you just let them know how it will benefit the public?
Sure. Sorry, we had talked about this last time, but perhaps somebody will be following this time who wasn't following last time. This bill will require any publisher who puts out content to private citizens or to residents in Maryland to also make it available to libraries on reasonable terms. So there are some large publishers who are not currently doing that, and you've, as I've shared the articles with you, Amazon is one of them. One of the Amazon divisions, Audible's, which does audiobooks, is another. Another is Blackstone, a major producer of audiobooks, which releases 10 titles a month through Audible. None of those are currently available to libraries, and they do include important content by important authors. Our basic position on this as, for library readers, is you shouldn't have to have a credit card to be an informed resident of Maryland, that libraries should have access to this content, should be able to share it, should be able to work to preserve it. And it would seem like Maryland legislators have agreed with that position. So thank you to them for their strong support of Maryland libraries readers. Yes, John?
You've mentioned Rhode Island. How closely aligned is the legislative language between Maryland and Rhode Island? And are there any other states who are trying to do the same thing on a state level?
The legislative language is very similar. And again, I think quite deliberately crafted. We're not asking the legislator to get involved with sorting out prices, for example, or the terms of licensing. We just say, we'll work with the publishers to make it reasonable for both. And obviously, we're hoping, in light of the fact that we're paying quite a bit for digital content now, to have them give a little bit on their prices in their negotiations with libraries. But again, we're not asking the legislators to consider this. The other state which has, last year, introduced legislation to this effect is New York. And to my knowledge, that has not yet been reintroduced as legislation. Of course, New York is where most of the major publishers are located, so they would certainly have a very strong voice in that state. So I don't know if that legislation will get reintroduced. But our hope is, through working with various stakeholders, the Urban Library Council, the American Library Association, to promote knowledge of this bill and consider two things, having other states work on it so we could pursue a 50-state strategy where, basically, there'd be no state ultimately where this law would not be in effect. But possibly also something at a federal level where the federal government might weigh in. If you're following the news, you know there's been substantial sort of antitrust interest in Amazon, in some of the other big tech companies, and possibly is something related to this. If you ask me what a reasonable price would be, I don't know that the publishers are going to agree to this. I would say, let us pay the same price for an ebook that we pay for a hardcover, call it $30, not the library discount price. We're usually paying about $15, $16 for a hardcover, because libraries get substantial discounts through jobbers. Call it $30 for 40 circulations, and then that would expire. It's not going to be an eternal license, because that's a point of concern for publishers is that if it never expires and you're only paying hardcover price, you know, a book might wear out. This will never wear out. We'd also like for the publishers to consider giving us perpetual access to a title, but that would be, I think, reasonable at a much higher price. Call it even $100. We'd like all those options to be available so that when we go to get a bestselling book, we might get one of those perpetual access licenses, or maybe two, so that, you know, people are still reading bestsellers, especially in series, from 20, 30 years ago. They still like those books, they're still important, they're still considered essential in libraries. There might be some titles that we look at that are less well-known, and we just say, that's an important one, it's a record of history. So, for example, a title that's popular right now, How to Be an Anti-Racist, we'd like that permanently. So what we'd want to do in these instances is say, all right, we're going to buy one of those that we'll have permanent access to, and we can keep it in the historical record and make sure it's preserved, and also because we anticipate it being read for years. And then we're also going to get several of these other licenses that, after the high demand goes, we could basically get them at a lower cost. And the pandemic has served as a catalyst. We knew that digital was going to become more important, we just didn't know it would happen quite so fast as it has. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we're hoping to get from the publishers. Obviously, we've got a lot of negotiations ahead of us.
You think that the effort to maybe elevate this to the federal level ought to get a little more horsepower now, even as you're trying to corral different states into the effort?
Well, we're talking with some stakeholders about that, yes. I think that we do want to accelerate this, and we think that there's several representatives in the House who would be supportive. One name particularly comes to mind in Rhode Island. Representative Chichalini has already weighed in on this, and we think he would be supportive, but we also think that some of our Maryland legislators in the House would be interested in moving forward. We also think that Senators Cardin and Van Hollen would be interested in possibly seeing this passed in Maryland in moving forward on a federal level. But we'll have to see what appetite there is for that right now. It could become part of a larger consideration of the tech, of the big tech companies, which are, in some cases, being investigated right now for antitrust practices.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michael, I have no unique insight, although some insight perhaps, but there are also a lot of mid-sized and small publishers that will be impacted. I don't think they've been attuned to these efforts, but I guarantee that if this ever goes to a national level, they're going to gang together in fighting this. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Well, actually, we have a really good working relation with many small and medium-sized publishers. A lot of them are all on board and view libraries as a very important market. So Abrams Publishers, for example, is already offering these multiple models through the Digital Public Library of America. And we think that that's not going to be a major source of dissension for us. In many cases, smaller publishers, often their biggest customers are libraries. And they, you know, they're not going to have, in many cases, too much trouble, but I'm not going to speak for every small publisher, other than the fact that many of the ones that we know already work with Overdrive, already work with Biblioteca, or Baker &amp; Taylor, sort of the three major public library providers of ebooks and digital audiobooks, already work with the Digital Public Library of America. And again, we're not, this legislation does not say, here's what's reasonable. It does just say, publishers talk with libraries. So we'll have to see where it goes, but I don't anticipate a lot of pushback from publishers who are eager to sell to libraries. Well, if there's no other question, let's move into our reopening update. As of today, St. Mary's County Public Libraries are no longer capping the number of visitors in the library. That's the major change from last week. We're still requiring masks. We strongly encourage social distancing. We are still quarantining materials. We do not have our meeting rooms open at this point in time, because in many cases, they are being used for that quarantine of materials. In April, we are going to open at Lexington Park and Leonardtown some small conference rooms that will hold two to four people socially distanced. We don't yet have a date for opening the meeting rooms. It's going to depend on, you know, the development of the pandemic. But with the governor releasing or easing some restrictions, including many retail establishments and restaurants being able to operate at 100% capacity, and with the decline in the county in the number of cases, we thought it was safe to go ahead with this step. We're not anticipating a major jump in attendance at this point, because we think people are still being careful. We will be monitoring, you know, if we start to have problems, we will reconsider this. But for right now, we're just really pleased that we can be back. We're not going to expand our hours just yet. We are going to continue curbside services and drive-through at Leonardtown as well. And we encourage people to get digital content, to attend our programs virtually. When you come to the library, please do recognize that you are out in public during a pandemic and should be taking every precaution, including using hand sanitizer, which we have throughout our buildings. But we are having six programs coming up that will be in person, but they'll all be outside with some partners, so there'll be one at the Pax River Museum, Naval Air Museum, there'll be one at Greenwell. So we are starting to get back to in-person programming. We don't have definite We don't have definite plans for summer programming, yet those are being worked on. We'll probably mostly still be virtual for summer. But again, it's going to depend on the pandemic situation. All of our staff who want a vaccine have had the opportunity to get at least one, and many of our employees have now had both of the Pfizer vaccinations. So for staff, we're thinking we are fairly safe from severe infection. We have had some staff members have family members contract the virus, and so they have had to quarantine even if they've got vaccinations just because the science is not yet certain on whether or not a vaccinated person can carry the virus. We think that's still possible, so we're still following every travel precaution for employees. We're not really authorizing travel by employees for the library outside of state. On inside state, it's having to be very careful. It's mostly just in county. It's not like we can restrict our employees from going to one branch to another. Often, they have to. So any questions about where we are with reopening?
I have one.
Mary Ann, I wasn't going to mention this, but Mary Ann just said in the chat that her husband has, in fact, contracted the COVID virus. And since you're willing to share that, I will, I will share it too. Chris, your husband is doing well still, I hope.
He is. He's, he's got relatively mild symptoms.
So Mary Ann will-
I'm stuck at home.
Yeah, Mary Ann will be quarantining at home for two weeks. And Michael says in chat, if people aren't looking, that he wishes all best for your, your husband and your family. But there was a question, yes. Questions?
John, you had a question first, and then Michael.
Okay. We touched on this in our last meeting, but has there been any change in the staff numbers who have indicated they will not be getting the vaccine? And if that's still out there, how are you going to handle that with regard to their interaction with visitors, other staff members, et cetera?
Well, it would have been legal-
I can update on that. Sorry.
I'm sorry?
I can give a little bit of an update on that.
Please do.
One of our branches that had quite a few people that were not getting vaccinated have now gotten vaccinated. So they only have two people that are waiting at this point. So that's good news.
So fewer, so fewer staff are now saying they don't wish to be vaccinated. We did have one employee who had such a severe reaction to the vaccine, and this can happen to any vaccination, not just the COVID, therefore not get the second one based on a doctor So, you know, we could have made it a condition of employment to be vaccinated, but knowing that even getting vaccinated wouldn't stop people from necessarily spreading the virus, we did not opt to go that route. Those people are aware that they are putting themselves at risk. And we do have, you know, the air filtration units in all our branches. We're cleaning. We're taking every precaution. We do not think that the library, as sites go, is particularly unsafe, but everybody in the public and in our employees need to realize that if you go into a public space without being vaccinated, you are putting your health at risk. Michael, did you have a question?
I wanted to ask how foot traffic has been, if people are complying with the safety measures, and how the staff is feeling about the reopening.
We are keeping greeters at the door. They don't have little aprons on, unlike at Walmart, to ensure compliance. People who are not wearing masks are told they may not enter the building. And since today is the first day, I can't really answer the question about foot traffic now that we're, we're taking the cap off. Foot traffic, since we reopened with, you know, went away from appointments for computers only, has still been relatively sparse. We're seeing more people, but there is a two-hour cap on staying in the library at this point. You know, we're not giving somebody a little slip of paper that says, here's, here's when this expires. We're trusting people to do this, but we still have, you know, half the computers blocked off. A lot of the comfy chairs have been removed or taped off. We were concerned about teen areas and teens being more willing to, you know, not socially distance. Without making the libraries unattractive, we're trying to make them, let's just say, not the welcoming place that they normally are. Mary Ann comments in the chat, on the first day we allowed people in the building, we had over 100 in each one, but compared to our normal traffic, when that could be in the thousands. So yes, we are seeing an increase, but so far, it's not unmanageable. And we'll know better starting today. I still think that most residents in the county are being careful. As I say, if we started to run into issues with overcrowding or people not socially distancing, we will reconsider, but we're hopeful that, that this is going to be a good trend for us. And Mary Ann comments that the customers are very happy. My observation of staff, but you were in the first day, Michael, so why don't you share what you had, what your experience was? Our staff are, by and large, very happy to have people back in the building. I think they've all been missing working with the public. We have a very outward-facing staff. I think that, for the most part, we're really glad. And I think in part, it's just a, you know, today's basically a one-year anniversary. We're really glad that people are back. But you were in the first day, so tell us what-
I went there on the first day, and I think, I think the Leonard Town Library was the happiest place in St. Mary's. The facilities looked incredible. The staff was super friendly and professional, greeting people, some by name. I walked out with a stack of books I was really excited to read. It was great. And people were being very respectful. Everyone was wearing masks appropriately, keeping distance. It was a very positive experience, so kudos to the entire library staff. Everyone did an amazing job.
Yeah, it's-
Michael, I think we all certainly support the degree of caution and the procedures that have been put in place since coming here. People are happy. But I can't believe anyone. Are you getting any emails, phone calls of people who think the library is doing too much or too little?
You know, I'm not getting much emails either way at this point. We had one person call while I was in a Zoom, a statewide Zoom meeting, wanting to ask why we had gone from seven to, to two days on our quarantine. And I, I did not take that call because I was in Zoom, but then the person didn't leave me a phone message, but then called the library and said, I tried to call the director and he didn't pick up. But, but why is that? I wanted him to call me, but didn't leave a phone number for me to get back to that person. So that person, if you are listening, the reason why is based on a recommendation from the Maryland Department of Health, looking at the various studies that have been done, suggesting that most of the risk on nearly all materials will be over after two days of quarantining. And so we moved from our more cautious seven days down to a full two, and that matched our partners in Calvert and Charles as well. It speeds up getting materials through the system. To my knowledge, nobody's been able to say, I got COVID from a library book. Nobody has indicated any concern about moving too fast, other than that. As far as moving too slow, I've not heard, when I met with the county commissioners in February, they were encouraging the library to expand its capacity, and we're happy to report to the commissioners that we have. But other than their wanting just to make sure that the library was serving as many people as possible, as safely as possible, I've not heard anybody encouraging us to do more. And I, you know, we get the occasional email that says the virus is a hoax, or, you know, you're saying very rude things about the governor, for example. And basically, I just let those roll on off. There's not much sense in engaging in that. So no, I'm not hearing a lot either way. I'm, I'm kind of surprised. Earlier, we were hearing more concerns about getting the library open. I think now people are just happy that we are. So as I say, we don't yet have a firm date for those meeting rooms, but it's all going to depend on how the pandemic goes. You know, there's new variants that are more contagious going around. If we have a, if we have another pandemic situation in county or state, we may have to roll back again. I'm hopeful that most people in the county are going to be responsible in the immediate time, meaning maybe possibly by fall. We could all be exercising normal caution and not the kinds of caution we've had to exercise the last year. One update for you that has just come in late on Friday. This is from State Librarian Irene Padilla. As you know, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed by President Biden on March 11, 2021. The IMLS, that's the Institute of Museum and Library Services, has announced that they received $200 million in the American Rescue Plan Act for libraries and museums. Maryland's portion of this funding is $3.3 million, and that's more than we typically receive in funding from the federal government for libraries in an entire year. There's no match requirement for these funds, and the IMLS sees this funding opportunity as a logical extension of the rapid and intentional rollout of CARES Act funds last year. So we have two years to use these. Now, we're waiting for more guidance at the state level from the IMLS on spending this money, but we're going to pass along more information as it becomes, our state librarian says. So we're going to schedule meetings statewide to discuss what we're already doing and develop statewide plans. This may give St. Mary's County Library the possibility of getting grant funding for additional services. And exactly what that funding could be for, we don't yet know. I don't know if it will allow us to expand our digital collection, for example, but certainly it could expand the number of Wi-Fi hotspots we have. It could allow us to circulate laptops. You know, I'm not saying we're going to do any of this, just so much as we're going to look really carefully at the availability of some funds that might allow us to deliver more services. The other sort of federal update is that, I'm sorry, this one's from the state. The state broadband deployment and broadband connectivity grants to bridge the digital divide, this does come ultimately from the government, is $7.17 billion for the E-Rate Program for Emergency Educational Connections and Devices. So that's another place where we might be able to expand our Wi-Fi capacity. So eligible equipment means Wi-Fi hotspots, modems, routers, devices that combine a modem and router and connected devices. So we'll be looking at ways, once we have more information from the state about how St. Mary's County Library could take advantage of this grant funding. Any questions on that one? We don't yet, as I say, there's not a lot of information other than that. There's going to be money there, and we intend to go for it. All right, we're going to move on to action items. Returning to something-
Michael.
Yes. Janice.
Michael.
Yes.
This is Janice. Before we end your report, I do want to take a point of personal privilege to once again thank the library for their support of the College and Career Fair featuring historical colleges and universities. And it was held on February 26, and we really couldn't have done it without the library. Sarah Stevenson was, I tell you, just by ten, working with Adrienne Gella Hunt, who coordinated the fair. And we just appreciate what they did. We were able to use Zoom rooms. We were able to pre-record, pre-give, and we have pre-recorded sessions that are available to people that registered. We did presentation. By it being virtual, we were able to actually do educational presentations and panels. When you have a live fair like that, the students just roam from table to table. This time, they went from Zoom room to platform, the rooms that wanted to platform to room. But they were able to tune in, and students and parents were able to tune in discussions, like transitioning from the IEP students and to the seniors and preparing for college and keeping students on track, you know? And it was really a collaborative event. And as I said, we even had moderators, the library moderators were Michael Report, Sarah Gil, and Mary Ann and Amy. And I could not pass this, this opportunity to say thanks again. And they were partners, the library, we used to partner with the school system, and we still partner with the school system. And now the library signed on with us, signed on literally, but work with us in this partnership. So kudos and thank you, thank you. Thank you for letting me add this in.
Well, Janice, thank you so much. And Sarah, all kudos to you, although a number of people who are staff who are, are on the, in the meeting now, also worked with that and hosted breakout sessions and, you know, admitted people and served as tech help. But yes, Sarah was our, our maestro there. So again, Sarah, thank you for that. And Janice, we're just always delighted to partner. Thank you for your kind words. To return to a question John asked earlier, the county, I asked Ms. Prattson, the head of county HR, all right, so, so why did you change vendors? The county has three large accounts, an OPEB and two others, and they were looking for a vendor to manage all three, and they did an RFP. This was not, not in any way an expression of disappointment with asset strategies. And, you know, our, our funds has certainly had its ups and downs with the market under asset strategies, but it has grown substantially through the investments that are made there. So I don't have any reason to express dissatisfaction with asset strategies either, but the county did not, you know, alert us that they were doing that, specifically alert us that they were doing that change. And our account is separate from the county's, so that wasn't necessary on their part. But my question to you as a board is, the arrangement with asset strategies predates me. It was made sort of under the aegis of the county. Now that the county's no longer with asset strategies, did you all- Now that the county is no longer with asset strategies, did you also wish to do an RFP to consider other vendors? And we don't have to choose the one the county did. Would you just prefer to leave as is? But since the county has made this change, it's a time we might think about this. So, I open up for your consideration.
Yeah, my suggestion, we haven't met with asset management for quite a while. We have someone on board now who can look at this based on background. Is it better to have someone from asset management come in, talk about the investment, so we can get a feel for how they're performing? Then we can make a determination, do we want to move elsewhere or not?
And Mr. Sanders, the rep, was supposed to be with us today, but as I say, he could get a COVID vaccination today, so he opted to do that. But he is scheduled to be at our board meeting in April. And basically, we were going to, you know, have him web X in, and you'd be able to ask him questions. And any questions you wish to have sent to him ahead of time, I will happily share with him. So, we can have that meeting in April.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation. To have the meeting, then we can decide if we want to go elsewhere or issue a RFP and so forth.
I agree.
All right, I'm seeing everybody sort of nod here. So, yes, John?
Based on my experience with another retirement plan here in the county, I would suspect that the board is not as informed as it probably should be with what the overall costs are and whether or not the individual investments down inside the account are actually appropriate for who you are and what you're trying to do. And I would suggest, therefore, that in anticipation of that meeting next month, if there could be some sharing or some access of materials, so we could see the same kind of thing that should be reported on regularly, what's in the account, how are the individual pieces doing, and more importantly, what is it costing to do what you're doing now, both on an individual asset basis and also on the basis of who you're using as your advisor on the whole thing?
I did send a report from last, the most recent quarter. He, Mr. Sanders, has sent me another one, and I shared that with you via email. I will share the most recent one he sent as well. If that wasn't information enough, then, John, may I please have you send questions that you would like to have answered?
Sure.
And I will put you directly in touch with Mr. Sanders. And he, perhaps you'd be willing to serve as a liaison to the board with asset strategies so that we could get the most informed opinion. And then still have Mr. Sanders come in April and have you discuss your concerns and considerations then.
Sure, I'd be happy to help there. When did you send that report out, Michael, the most recent one?
The one I sent from, I think it was the third quarter of last year, was about two weeks ago. But I've got, since then, I've got one from the fourth quarter of last year that I can also send.
Perfect, if I could see that one.
Sure. All right, I don't think we need to have a motion--
Could you remind--
Yes, yes?
Could you remind us again of when that needs to be fully funded and how we are--
Oh, when the OPEB is fully funded, yeah. I did send you previously, and we had a discussion before as a board, the report from Bolton, which looks at specifically at the OPEB account. And in order to be fully funded, it's going to take a couple million more. And how we're going to get there, I have no idea. Bolton suggests we try to do what the county is doing, which is funded at 75%. The idea, of course, is that the investments coming in or the growth coming in from the account will pay for the costs that we're currently mostly paying on a Pago basis for our retirees' health care benefits. But how we get that fully funded, I, without, so this past year, for example, fiscal year, on a Pago, we did more than we were, you know, we have a budget line for this. We paid in Pago more than we were getting, as it were, from the county for that budget line. I've asked for increases in the past, and we've never got any. What we have done in the past is when we have any kind of a budget surplus for the year, is we put it into that account. This past year, we did not have a budget surplus. So, by and large, we've been dependent upon Pago and on investments. And getting a more aggressive funding of that is going to be a challenge for us, I'll be honest. I had sent you a, it's really more an addition and not a big change to our dress code. It adds athletic leggings as something that we'll ask not to be worn, just because they, you know, they're wonderful for athletic purposes, but maybe not so professional. We took away the words "long shirt" and substituted the word "dress" over leggings. And then finally, we just added some information about face masks, asking the same rules of clothing, no athletic wear, no political or social messages, no graphics with a branded character such as DC or Marvel Comics. That's just, you know, we don't promote commercial entities in the library for several reasons. One of them being that if we promote, one, it could look like a product endorsement, and, two, it could mean that people with competing products said, well, we want equal time. And how would we say no? I will tell you that we are getting some branded face masks. They are the double-face masks that will have the library logo on them. And we're getting enough to share with you should you decide you need yet another face mask. It will say St. Mary's County Library on it, be nice dark blue. So, we will provide you with masks as well, should you want one. So, I do ask that you please approve these updates to the dress code.
I'll move.
And Jim, I think it's time to call the vote. Jim, I think you're on mute. You are on mute, Jim.
We can't hear you, Jim.
You're on mute, Jim.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I am. But the clock went off and I went to mute because, yeah, what I said was, I didn't even hear a second, so we have trouble with the audio.
Michael Dunn, seconded.
Okay, any friends, any other questions or comments? Okay, not again, because of the audio issue, aside people like me who mute too long. I ask you to indicate you're in favor by raising your hand. Okay, we're all raising our hands, so motion carries.
Late-breaking addition, we did want to add something to our personnel manual under 7.5 work rules. And I did not get this to you. It has been put in Board Docs. I did put it in the Google folder. I'll just read it to you. I don't think there's anything to be concerned about with it. Employees should be alert to customers. While working, they should be aware of their surroundings, acknowledge customers, and be approachable. Reading a book, intently watching a computer, and reading or scanning a cell phone while in work time, and especially while working at a service desk, is prohibited. Professional reading and online learning should be conducted out of the customer area. Personal reading and scanning reading on a phone or tablet should be conducted on breaks. And we're not having any particular issue with that, but it's just something that we've been trying to inculcate as behavior, and we just want to formalize it as part of our work rules. So, I will ask that you can please consider approving that.
Move to adopt.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, again, I'll ask you to indicate by raising your hand if you approve changes. Okay, so everyone, motion carries.
One more thing, and it's the big one. We talked earlier about how both House and Senate had overridden the governor's veto last year of the Lifelong Learners Act that provides funds for libraries. And in St. Mary's, I think we'll be getting about an additional $40,000 to go completely fine-free for children. Well, many of our children's materials were already fine-free, but this is going to require some major changes in how we do that. Because Polaris makes it easier to do materials, all right, so these picture books will be fine-free. Other than our special children's cards and the cards we have with the, with the schools, which are basically the same, but they're limited in what people can do with them, we don't have a fine-free children's card, and we're going to have to implement a whole new system. In response to this, doing some rather complicated things, Charles County Board recently voted to go completely fine-free. I drew your attention to that fine-collected number we had earlier. Now, granted, for the first, maybe, month of this fiscal year, and we have been, you know, in many cases, not doing as much business. That number also included lost and damages. We'll still be able to have lost and damaged collection. That's not necessarily going to be out, although there's a delay in the time that we can charge for lost or damaged items for anybody who's a child. Basically, we're not going to really be collecting a whole lot in fines in the future as more and more people are going virtual. So, what we would like to do is follow Charles's lead. It's going to be much easier for us to manage this transition if we are simply fine-free as a system. Going fine-free has been something that half Maryland libraries have now done. They are finding that materials come back, if anything, better. It's not that the fines are an incentive to get things back on time. Often, they're a disincentive. Once a family especially who might be struggling economically get a fine, they simply never come back to the library. The materials don't come back to the library. For people who are out of work because of COVID, fines are disincentive to use the libraries. We know that it's an economic barrier, especially for families with young children who may not have a lot of money. But we also know that this is not causing materials not to come back. If anything, as I say, they come back sooner and better. So, we are going to be getting from the state for fiscal year '22, starting in July. That money that we'll be getting under the repeal isn't going to come in for a year from this July, that $40,000. And incidentally, we don't have an increase scheduled for that year other than that. But we're getting about an additional $18,000 from the state for this upcoming year. I would propose using that funds just to have us go completely fine-free as a system. And I would like you to consider approving that.
I move that we adopt the policy of going fine-free.
I'll second that.
Yeah, like, this is for clarification, so we're talking about fine-free for everyone?
Everybody, yes. Basically, we would not be charging fines. We'd still be charging for lost or damaged items, items that, you know, if somebody's not bringing things back, their card's going to get blocked. It's not that they're going to get a free pass. There are things in place to make sure we're getting our materials back. But no, people would not be paying fines.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, Michael, I put forward about that in the beginning, because it's, the library should not be a moneymaker in a sense. But my only concern is the impact on our budget, you know, because again, it's hard to know because of what's going on now in terms of COVID. My only suggestion would be to make sure that the county commissioners are aware that we're moving in that direction. Obviously, part of that is because the children, we're sort of mandated to do that. And, but, you know, we operate with such a tight, tight budget, and if we see a decrease in the funding source, that means ultimately, we need to rely on the county funding to offset that, depending on the amount involved. So, I think it's important to let them know that they do provide the funding, that this is an issue that we're preparing to do, so that they're not put off guard. Eventually, you have to reevaluate the funding.
All right, well, fines have been going down for quite some time, and we were considering doing this anyway, and we have discussed that with them previously. But if that's your wish, then I will communicate with them to that effect.
Michael?
Yeah, let me, yeah. Yeah, Janice, we just talked about, I think Michael did a hand first and then gone, and then you could follow, Janice.
Okay.
Given the expressed, the concerns Jim raised about some of the budget issues, I wonder, and given how weird the timing is now, given the pandemic, was there any thought or any interest in doing this as like a one- or two-year pilot, so that we could sort of see how this goes and evaluate? Would it be helpful to do this on like a shorter-term basis before making a permanent change?
The difficulty with that is that if you put fines back into effect, you have a rather unpleasant public relations situation on your hands.
That's exactly what I'm saying, to do it as a pilot.
Yeah, people don't really like you to bring it back.
Okay, I just don't want us to be in a situation where we need to bring it back down the road and, you know, I don't know. That's my two cents.
Yeah, my recommendation would be then, if that's a concern, that we not move forward with it, because as I say, if you, if you take them away and then put them back in, it seems punitive.
John, you have a question?
I'm a little bit concerned, and maybe this can be overcome by a good education effort. But given the long history across multiple years of the relationship between the library and the commissioners, I would hate for them to come up with the notion that says, well, look, you all have turned your back on X number of dollars, and now you're turning to the taxpayers and throwing it on their shoulders to make that up. I think they've got to be brought in earlier rather than later, so they know why we're doing it, what the long-term trend has been, what the trend in the library industry has been, et cetera, so that they're not gobsmacked by saying, oh, you turned your back on, let's say $50,000, and now you want what, us to put it up? I don't think we need that fight.
Well, in Calvert and Charles, the commissioners have gone ahead and done that. I guess--
Fortunately, that's Calvert and Charles.
Yeah, I guess what I'd say is, the reason why we're bringing it forward fairly quickly here is-- here is we are required to comply with that, with the new law now. And this just would have eased the path for getting this in place rather than having to migrate to a new type of card for thousands of people, which I'm... But we'll have to investigate how we're going to do that if we don't move forward. But if, you know, I will report back to Smurla that we are still charging fines if that is your will until such time as we can move forward with that. It will require Smurla to make some changes for St. Mary's County Library alone.
Here's the thing, Michael. I just don't want to be on the wrong end of the power curve with the commissioners. I can go with no fines. That's not the problem with me. It's giving them an opportunity to say, "Why didn't you tell us that we were headed in this direction? Now we have to think about how we're going to accommodate you to the tune of X number of lost dollars."
All right. Well, if that is your will, then that is how it will be.
No. We still have more than this.
Yeah, well, I think in comments with John just that the taxpayers, the fine would be leave taxpayers of additional funds. And so that is something worth thinking about. And if we're charging for lost and stolen, then we're still dealing with people that are being abusive. So that's just my comment on that. So it works both ways for taxpayers. The other thing is the $40,000 for children, fine for each of the children, is that not available? Is that only for children?
It's...
Is there a way to find out if that can be added? And is that just for this year because there's extra money? And I wasn't...
That money...
There's still $18,000.
That money will not be available until the July 1 of 2022. That money specifically earmarked for this. So that money, and the bill has only to do with making materials for children fine-free. So, you know, it's not like we're going to be able to change the law or get the money earlier. Unfortunately, no.
Yeah. And the $18,000, what was that?
That's the additional money we're going to get from the state this year. Over the amount we got last year, there was a 20 cent per capita increase in funding for libraries. And although the budget has not finally been passed, there has not been any move to strip that out. So we're looking at having from the state about $18,000 more than we did last year, starting on July 1 of 2021, this July.
Again, just go back to the point. Let me address, I think, Michael Dunn again, from my standpoint of HR. You know, when you put a program in place or, and if people expect it to continue, it is hard. I agree with Jennifer here with Michael Blackwell. It's to be hard to reverse it, so we need to continue. But I think a lot of our feelings and opinions and really thoughts have been in one direction, that we are, of course, looking out to benefit our residents of this county and so forth. The commissioners, though, have a different mindset. They look at numbers. They care about cost. So I think what we need to do is to come up with a summary of what's changing, what we want to change, and especially with Ken, I realize it's a challenge, to estimate the financial impact based on this term for the year, and this year has been a tough one to utilize. We can send it to the commissioners. I'll be glad to talk to Commissioner Guy and say, "I need to talk to you about this." But I agree, if we have to go back, and I share John's opinion, if we have to go back to them and some future budget requests and say we need to make up for this, I think it's going to run into some issues. So I think we need to, before we institute this, we need to alert the county commissioners, this is where we're going, the reasons why, you know, what other organizations are doing, things like that to support the logic, especially when it has a financial implication that directly impacts the budget.
All right. Well, I will pull together a...
Michael?
Go ahead.
If I could jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Carolyn.
And this is actually a little bit going with what Jim was saying. We are going to save some money in some respects, not a lot, but we're going to save some because we will not, if we go fine-free, we're not going to have to send any money to a collection agency. Yes, we've often, we offset that with what we get back as far as collections, but those are usually not necessarily large fines. Those are usually materials, to my understanding. The other thing is printing the new cards. If we go fine-free now, that's not an issue, but we will have to if we stick with just the children's cards, if I understood Michael correctly. So, yes, we will have some offsets, and I think it's an excellent idea. I was going to suggest, like Jim said, we do a breakdown of costs versus savings, et cetera. But this is going to be the wave of the future, whether we do it this year, whether we do it next year, or it's going to happen that we're going to go fine-free. The question is, is it going to be the next fiscal year or the future fiscal years? So I think if we get in our ducks in a row, yes, the commissioners look at money, and that is their, you know, and as well they should, but they have to look at the big picture as well, which also is our responsibility as well as theirs. So that's my thoughts on it.
Janice, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I would agree with Carolyn on that because once we alert them, then the decision is ours. I just kind of wondered what we would do if they would balk at it, but it would be good to, you know, bring them into the conversation.
All right.
I don't think we should negate what we want to do.
Well, I will communicate with...
You know, the commissioners, we've been appointed to look out for the best interest of the library and the citizens who use its service. And going fine-free, if that's in our best estimation, what is best for the library and the citizens, then we will put our case forward to the commissioners and hope that they understand and see what we are doing. I mean, that's all we can do.
So is there, and again, we don't need to vote on it, but is there general consensus we need to put together something?
No, I don't think you need to vote on it at all. I think that this discussion is enough. And...
Yeah, I agree.
Moving forward, we do, for, our next meeting is April 19th. Our county budget hearing is March 23rd, a week from tomorrow, so I will be here in this very room, I'm sure, listening to that. We did not, and, you know, when we prepared our budget, there was not yet any sense of overriding the governor's veto, and we did not include anything in our budget request about this particular issue. So we will not have that in front of them on the 23rd. I will say that if we put this off, it's probably going to have to be, probably going to have to be a year before we would have that in a budget request in front of them, but I will try to bring it up next week as something to consider. I will try to put together something that will be a cost-benefit analysis on this. Most immediately, I'm going to have to go to Smurla and indicate that because we are now required to be in compliance with this law, what we're doing right now is we're just on a case-by-case basis forgiving fines for young folks. We will have to continue that, but it ultimately is going to require some changes to Polaris to make this automatic and be in full compliance with this law. So we will, we will work with Smurla to make those changes, and I will update you next month on where we are with those. Yes?
Michael, and Jim, I guess, I had made a motion. Do you want me to withdraw that motion?
I'll leave that up to you.
Would you make the motion then to accept the fine?
Define free policy, yes.
Yeah, then I need you to withdraw the motion.
Okay, so withdrawn.
Thank you. Again, my suggestion is, it's hard to bring this now to the commissioners in anticipation of its impact on the budget, which is too far along. My suggestion, number one, this is going to be an implication that will carry forward in all the years after the current year. So I still feel the best alternative is to get put together the logic and the financial implication in a single document, looking forward it to the entire county commissioners, or again, you and I can meet with Mr. Guy, and we've got to be careful, as some of you know, that if we have too many of the board involved, then it constitutes a meeting. And talk to them about it, but learn if this is what we're looking to do. But I think trying to suddenly shift into discussions on the current budget, you're not going to be able to satisfy all the things typically they focus on, which are logic finance. So I think it should be separate from that in a separate meeting with at least the commissioner's president or others if they like to talk about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what are the financial implications, but not worry about getting into discussions on the current budget cycle.
Okay. That being the case, that's, I have my instructions. And as I say, I'll go to Smurla, and we will begin to work on implementing changes as necessary. They will be for St. Mary's County since the other systems are not going to be fine-free. In addition to our budget hearing on 3/23, dates to remember coming up, the Maryland Library Association and Delaware Library Association, a joint conference, that's May 3 through May 7. It will be virtual. There are lots of presentations about what's happening in libraries, and we have a grant to have attendance, and since it's virtual, it's really just signing up mostly for the... There's a small fee. If any of you trustees would like to attend any of the conference, please let me know. I can get you a schedule. Oh, yes, Mary Ann just says in chat, "And I will be made president." Mary Ann is our incoming president for the Maryland Library Association. So if any of you would like to attend that, yes, applause, absolutely. Please let me know, and we will get you registered to attend, and it will mostly be via Zoom and not in person. I'm doing two presentations, but you have enough of me on a daily basis and don't need to listen to me anymore. I'll be co-presenting with Alan Inoue, who's the ALA head of ALA Digital Strategy on digital content, what a surprise. And I'm also doing something on library futures. So, but others of our staff will also be presenting. And as I say, there's just a lot of interesting sort of sessions at that conference, so if you want to attend, please let us know. Other than that, I have no other business today.
Okay, any other issues on the board? Okay, Michael, I sort of lost you, and I'm sure we're done, so if nothing else, then the meeting is adjourned.
The Children's Services Division as well, Jill from our staff, Jill Hutchison. So yes, we have folks making an impact statewide here.
That's good. That's great. Okay, so if nothing else, then the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all, as always, for all you do for the library.